When we launched this program, we were the only one in the state that was actually teaching this milestone program. So you want to give a shout out to our Northport Rotary as well, who sponsored this program here at the Aquatic Center and actually paid for a trainer to come in all the way from Nebraska, where this program originates there. We practice and we go through what's called milestones here. So as soon as the kids progress through the milestones, we can continue moving on through them. And at the end of it, it's a pretty awesome program when they graduate. It's one of the final things that they do is they jump in fully clothed and they have to turn over, roll over on their back, and actually be able to scream for help at that point in time. It's just an awesome segment program that leads right into our Learn to Swim program. So that way, we can make sure we're keeping our kids safe in, on, and around the water.
Today is Thursday, September 18th, 2025. It is 5:01 PM. We're in city chambers, and I call the City Commission's Special Meeting to order. Commissioners present, Commissioner Duval, Commissioner Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emrich, and Commissioner Petrov is quorum present for the meeting. Also present, City Manager Fletcher, interim City Attorney Golan, City Clerk Faust, Board Specialist Lindner, Deputy Chief Morales, and what do we got? Deputy Chief Hurley. Frankie, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to approve the agenda. Let's vote. And that passes five to zero. City Clerk, public comments?
Deputy McDowell, good evening, Commissioners. Health, safety, and welfare is a common phrase said by every Commissioner and staff at one point or another. During the FY 2025-26 budget cycle, all of you said public safety is the primary role of the city. Based on the budget workshop documents, the Fire Department gained eight new employees and MPPD saw no increases to their staffing levels. I applaud your desire to revisit the MPPD staffing every few months to determine if positions can be filled as money becomes available. Did you know there is approximately 100,000 available in this budget right now? Yes, right now. Two simple no votes would go a long way in showing the MPPD and the community you are genuinely concerned about the lack of additional staff that wasn't added to the MPPD this year. After all, the priority is public safety, not creating a Communications Department or an IT Department, which only increases the salary of one employee in each division. By no means am I discounting the great work they do for other departments and for the citizens. As a matter of fact, I have repeatedly said they do a fantastic job. However, I couldn't imagine the IT manager or Communications Manager doing anything less than what they do now if they were to remain a division. The $100,000 could be used to hire another police officer or possibly two or three additional support staff in the Police Department. Please vote no to creating two new departments. Show the citizens you mean it when you said public safety is the priority. Hannah Rose, I previously reached out by email regarding the new ordinance adopted in Putnam County, Florida, that strengthens residency and activity restrictions for registered sexual offenders and predators. Unfortunately, I have not received a response from anyone within the city, not even a simple acknowledgement. I understand that our city is short-staffed and behind schedule, but this is a matter that directly impacts the safety of our children and families. Putnam County's ordinance expands protections beyond the minimum state requirements. It increases residency restrictions to 2,500 feet from schools, childcare facilities, bus stops, parks, and playgrounds, prevents clustering of offenders, limits their presence in multifamily communities, increases accountability through updated registration fees, and prohibits participation in Halloween and similar events that draw children. Violations are enforceable with real penalties. Importantly, Putnam County has already done the hard work of drafting and adopting this ordinance. Northport does not need to reinvent the wheel. Our leaders can use Putnam's ordinance as a model, make adjustments as needed, and move quickly to enact it here. The framework already exists, saving valuable time and resources. I did have a conversation with Mr. Stokes, and while I believe he wants to help, I left with the impression that the responsibility to push this forward rests on residents rather than leadership. That is discouraging. Citizens should not have to do the legwork of routing ordinances to legal or the city manager. We elect and trust our leaders to act decisively on matters of public safety. Our community deserves the same protections already in place in Putnam County. I urge you to take immediate action and direct the appropriate departments to review and draft a similar ordinance for our city. Please do not let this request go unanswered. Silence communicates indifference, and indifference on this issue puts children at risk. In person, we have Valdi Oleander.
411, my badge.
Good afternoon. I am Valdi Oleander. I come here in peace. I have the dignity. Stokes, I am instructing you to remove cap off my back, learn English, and obey your oath. Country of Albania has adopted the world's first AI minister in attempt to combat corruption, a member of cabinet who is not present physically, but has been created virtually, since current government employees cannot be trusted. But who write the codes, control the software? Society has fallen to the point that robots are trusted more than human beings. I don't consent to 2026 budget of 331 million. Since 21, 2021, population grew by 12,877, equal to 15%. Budget grew by 76%. Fire rescue grew by 8%. Solid waste grew by 33%. Road and drainage grew by 67%. Under Pletcher, per capita, tax per capita grew from 1283 to 3585, 55%. Is Fletcher manager or mismanager? I bet employees love him. Commissioner, do you vote that you saw 100% increase of your salary since 2021? Mr. Petrov, when Stokes asked me why you voted no, answer because there is no consent from the people. And ask him why you voted yes without consent of the people. 2025 CAF, page 8 of the 2000 PAF REIT. At the close of this carry in 2024, the city governmental funds reported combined ending $220 million. Please explain why this increases. You voted unnecessary or not? Show me one benefit from all these increases that benefits me. Is my life easier?
Thank you, sir. All righty. Moving on to public hearings. Got ordinance second readings, ordinance 2025-26. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Ordinance number 2025-26, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, activating a communications department, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading of this ordinance, which was requesting the change from a division to department for our communications team. We do feel like we have made a valid point and statement regarding the work that is provided agency-wide for them. We do also recognize the last vote that we received for this item, and we don't have any new information to add other than that the amount of this budget increase has been allowed for. It would not provide any other undue burden on the city or its citizens. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything to this item? We spent plenty of time talking about it the last time. Any public comment?
There is none.
And I'm going to close this public hearing and request a motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-26 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Vice Mayor, to adopt ordinance 2025-26 as presented. There's nothing more. And while there's three assenting votes and two dissenting votes, this requires a unanimous decision, so this motion fails. Moving on to ordinance number 2025-27. City Clerk, if you'd read by title only, please.
Ordinance number 2025-27, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, activating an information technology department, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
You, City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item, similar to the last, is the request to convert our IT division to a department. Once again, this is a request that was put into our budget and allowed for, not asking for any extra funding to make the change that we believe is necessary. No new information other than that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anything to this? Seeing nothing, any public comment?
There is none.
And then I'll close this public hearing and request a motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-27 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to adopt ordinance 2025-27 as presented. There's nothing more to it. And as with the prior motion, this has three assenting votes, two dissenting votes, requires a unanimous vote in the affirmative to pass, so this fails. Moving on to ordinance number 2025-24. I need a motion to direct City Clerk to read by...
No motion.
I'm sorry?
No motion, a second reading? It shouldn't have a motion on there.
That does require a motion to... Okay, don't need a motion. All right, then if you'd be kind enough just to read by title only.
Ordinance number 2025-24, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, adopting the ad valorem millage rate and rollback rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Section 2.01, the general municipal millage rate and tax levy for the city of Northport, Florida, for the fiscal year is 3.7667 mils, which is $3.7667 per $1,000 of assessed property within the city. The millage rate is certified to the property appraiser and the tax collector of Sarasota County, Florida, to be levied for the city's general government operating and capital purposes for fiscal year. Section 2.02, the general municipal millage rate is 0.47% higher than the rollback rate of 3.7491 mils, which is $3.4791 per $1,000 of assessed property within the city.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager, you want to introduce this item, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fiscal year 2025-26 tentative budget is based on a 3.7667 ad valorem millage rate, and this rate represents $3.7667 per $1,000 of taxable value. The proposed millage rate is budgeted to generate $39,421,820 in general fund revenues at a 96.5% collection rate. The reason that the ad valorem tax revenues are increasing include personnel costs from 14 additional general fund positions, and an increase in facility maintenance for deferred maintenance, a transfer to the renewal and replacement fund for future capital facilities needs, generator improvements, and city share costs on fire station 83 and 84 roof replacements. During the City Commission's Special Meeting held on September 4, 2025, the City Commission unanimously continued ordinance number 2025-24, the second reading, as presented. We ask that you accept that today. Happy to answer any questions you might have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Seeing none. Any public comment?
There is none.
In which case, I'm closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-24 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to adopt ordinance 2025-24 as presented. If there's more to that, let us vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on, ordinance 2025-25. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Ordinance number 2025-25, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, adopting the non-district budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, adopting the capital improvement budget and program, prescribing the terms, conditions, and provisions with respect to the items of appropriation and their payment, providing for supplemental appropriations and reappropriations, providing for findings, providing for posting of the budgets, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This request is regarding the non-district budget and capital improvement budget. We ask that you choose our new option one, which is to amend the ordinance number 2025-25 to exclude funding for budget proposals related to elevating the communications and information technology divisions to departments. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything to this item? Seeing nothing. Any public comment?
There is none.
And I'll close this public hearing, and I'm looking for motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-25 as presented, removing the elevation of communications and IT from divisions to departments.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to adopt ordinance number 2025-25 as presented, accepting for the elevation of both IT and communications from divisions to departments. There's nothing more to that. And that passes four to one, with Commissioner Petrov dissenting. Commissioner?
Thank you, ma'am. I do believe that this budget is excessive as it relates to the proportion of the growth of our city. As a board, we requested $3 million in cuts for the direction of the mayor, and I didn't see the actual cuts in the form of actual cuts. So with that, I'm voting no on the budget.
All righty. Moving on. Any general public comment?
There is none.
That then, it is 5:18, and I am adjourning this meeting. All right. Afternoon. Today is Thursday, September 18th, 2025. It's 5:19 PM. We are in the city chambers, and I call the Fire Rescue District Governing Body Meeting to Order. Commissioners present, Commissioner Duval, Commissioner Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emrich, Commissioner Petrov is quorum present for this meeting. Also present, City Manager Fletcher, interim City Attorney Golan, City Clerk Faust, Board Specialist Lindner, Deputy Chief Morales, and Deputy Chief Hurley. Sorry, Deputy Chief. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Commissioner Duval, to approve the agenda. And that passes five to zero. We have any public comments?
There is none.
In which case, moving on to public hearings, Resolution Number 2025-R-57. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Resolution Number 2025-R-57, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Northport, Florida, as the governing body of the Northport Fire Rescue District, adopting the final Northport Fire Rescue District budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, prescribing the terms, conditions, and provisions with respect to the items of appropriation and their payments, providing for supplemental appropriations and reappropriations, providing for findings, providing for posting of the budget, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The final budget for fiscal year 2025-26 for the Northport Fire Rescue District is $20,538,830, which is a decrease of $2,582,882 from the fiscal year 2024-25 amended budget. This represents a 9% increase to the district assessment rate over the prior year assessment rate. We ask that you adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-57 as presented. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anything to this item? Seeing nothing. Public comment?
There is none.
Then I'll close this public hearing and request a motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-57 as presented.
Second.
Oops. Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Commissioner Duval, to adopt Resolution 2025-R-57 as presented. If there's nothing more to it, let us vote. And that passes four to one, with Commissioner Petrov dissenting. Commissioner?
Thank you, ma'am. I do support our Fire Department and Fire Rescue District, but with a lesser increase of a rate. So with that, I'm voting no.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
There is none.
And before I adjourn this meeting, I would just like to go on record as saying that I don't believe there's anyone on this dais who is happy about the need to raise rates or fees. We all feel them, just like every other citizen in the city, and none of us are independently wealthy who sit here on this dais. So, you know, I just want people to understand, for commissioners, I personally believe that our jobs are more than just to assent or dissent on votes. It is also to provide direction and make decisions. And we went through a lengthy, many months' worth of budget process to get to where we are today, and I feel that, you know, I support the budgets for these districts as well as the general budget because I believe that after scrutiny, review, drilling down on these budgets, this is the best we can do in order to keep up with the growth of this city. We feel the pain like everyone. No one wants increases. But at the same time, it's not, in my opinion, acceptable to simply dissent or assent without some substantiation to your position. And, you know, if someone can show me where we can cut these budgets dramatically and make an impact, I'm all ears, I'm willing to listen, but, you know, I feel compelled to say this. We work very hard to utilize our citizens' tax dollars as efficiently as we possibly can, and, you know, yet costs go up and the city continues to grow, and in order to continue to provide the high quality of services that our citizens have come accustomed to and to provide the public safety that everybody expects, it costs money. So with that, it's 5:25. I adjourn this meeting. My good City Clerk? Today is Thursday, September 18th. It's 5:25 PM. We're in city chambers. I call this Road and Drainage District Governing Body Meeting to Order. Commissioners present, Commissioner Duval, Commissioner Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emrich, and Commissioner Petrov is quorum present for this meeting. Also present, City Manager Fletcher, interim City Attorney Golan, City Clerk Faust, Board Specialist Lindner, Deputy Chiefs Hurley and Morales. City Clerk, or I'm sorry, we need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to approve the agenda. And that passes five to zero. Any public comments?
There is none.
Moving on to public hearings, Resolution 2025-R-58. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Resolution Number 2025-R-58, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Northport, Florida, as the governing body of the Northport Road and Drainage District, adopting the final Northport Road and Drainage District budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, prescribing the terms, conditions, and provisions with respect to the items of appropriation and their payment, providing for supplemental appropriations and reappropriations, providing for findings, providing for posting of the budget, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The final budget for the Northport Road and Drainage District is $30,928,880, which is a decrease of $16,752,436 from the fiscal year 2024-25 amended budget. This represents a 15% increase to the Northport Road and Drainage District assessment rate over the prior year assessment rate. We ask that you adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-58 as presented. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anything to this item? Seeing nothing. Any public comment?
There is none.
Then I'm closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
I'll make that. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-58 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to adopt Resolution 2025-R-58 as presented. Let us vote. That passes four to one. Commissioner Petrov dissenting. Commissioner?
Thank you, ma'am. I voted no not to show up or not to get attention, but I feel that the rate of the increase and the rate that we, as we go increasing those rates on annual basis outpaces the growth of the city, the inflation and so forth. I would be much more comfortable to see a rate increase half of that size.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any general public comments?
There is none.
All righty. Then at this point, it is 5:29, and I adjourn this meeting. Today is Thursday, September 18th, 2025. Hasn't changed since the last time. It is 5:29 PM. We're in city chambers, and I call the Solid Waste District Governing Body Meeting to Order. Commissioners present, Commissioner Duval, Commissioner Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice Mayor Emrich, Commissioner Petrov is quorum present for the meeting. Also present, City Manager Fletcher, interim City Attorney Golan, City Clerk Faust, Board Specialist Lindner, and Deputy Chiefs Hurley and Morales. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to approve the agenda. Let's vote. And that passes five to zero. Any public comments?
There is none.
Then moving on to public hearings, 2025-R-59. City Clerk, if you'd read by title only, please.
Resolution number 2025-R-59, a resolution of the City Commission of the city of Northport, Florida as the governing body of the Northport Solid Waste District, adopting the final Solid Waste District budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, prescribing the terms, conditions, and provisions with respect to the items of appropriation and their payment, providing for supplemental appropriations and reappropriations, providing for findings, providing for posting of the budget, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The final budget for fiscal year 2025-26 for the Solid Waste District is $20,521,800. This is an increase of $1,925,862 from the fiscal year 2024-25 amended budget. The assessment rate for fiscal year 25-26 will be $332.75 per resident, which is a 10% increase from the fiscal year 2024-25 rate of $302.50. We ask that you adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-59 as presented. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anything to this item? Seeing nothing. Any public comment?
There is none.
Then I'm going to close the public hearing and request a motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-59 as presented.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to adopt Resolution 2025-R-59 as presented. Let's vote. And that passes five to zero. Any public comment? General public comment? Okay. At which time, it is 5:32, and I adjourn this meeting.